I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, in the name of the Lord.
Welcome everyone to the record session of Goldendale City Council for September 7, 2021. Appreciate everyone being here.
Myron?
Here.
Phil?
Here.
Annie? Lauren? Ellie? Oh.
There's Ellie.
It might help them to hear me if I did unmute.
That's a good idea.
Andy? Lauren? Ellie? Ellie?
I'm here.
Dave?
Here.
Darni?
Here.
They had one in Seattle and the other had a commitment out for this work.
So moved mayor.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to excuse Andy Hall and Lauren Mayer for the city council meeting for September 7, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. It is on the six-year street plan and...
The pollution device is connected successfully.
Dustin Conroy will present the details of the six-year street plan.
Thanks mayor.
Thank you.
So Larry and I worked on putting together the six-year street plan and we basically just updated the one from two years ago with a couple of exceptions. We updated the funds for the streets and the cost because today's cost is much higher than it has been in previous years. And also we added chip seal project or pavement preservation to this as well. And so for 2022, we've put the West Byers project on for that, which has been funded by TIB. The bidding atmosphere has not been good this year for bidding a project. We could have gone out to bid in early August, but we haven't been able to even get bids on small sewer projects. And so in discussions with TIB, we've held that project back. So that'll be constructed next year and will go out for bid in probably either December or January this fall. And then for 2023, we included the East Simcoe Drive, which is from Highway 97 to Columbus as just a chip seal project, pavement preservation. And then we would apply for Schuster Street to get reconstructed, which is the street right in front of the primary school. And as you'll see, the PCR score, that's the pavement score, which is done by TIB. It's not done by the city. It had a really low score of 24. So normally, once you get below 30, you would apply for a full reconstruction. And so that's what we have down for that one. In 2024, we've got North Mill Street from Broadway to the city limits. That's out towards the fairgrounds. And in 2025, we've got a chip seal plan for South Roosevelt, basically from Broadway Avenue all the way down to Simcoe. And then also the reconstruction project of King and Brook Street. King Street's the one there by the middle school and then kind of around that corner to where it ties in to Schuster Street or Roosevelt. For 2026, we have pipeline from Third Street to High Street. And in 2027, Darlene Street from Columbus to Washington. So Clicket County this year is doing part of Darlene just outside the city limits. This would kind of close that gap and bring it all the way to Columbus Avenue. And you'll see that the PCR score on that one's still pretty high, but in five years, most likely, it should be lower by then. And so we've updated the cost on all those projects, kind of on today's current dollars. And so there should be also a map that shows the location of each of those also. If you've got any questions, you'll see on our cost estimate too, we broke it down into what the city's cost would be as well as what we would apply to TIB Transportation Improvement Board to fund that as a grant. And that's typically a 10% city cost, 90% grant is what we typically put in for because that's what you get the most points for and your project's more likely to be funded in that range. So you have any questions?
Okay, Dustin, on the West Byers Street there going out for bid in December, what would be the goal of how soon could you?
So we'd be ready to start as soon as the weather broke in the spring.
Okay, okay.
And so most likely that would be May, maybe June if we had a late winter. But you typically get your best prices in bidding a project in December, January considerably. And so I think it's a benefit to everyone to do that.
Okay, good. Then on the street going out towards the fairgrounds, would that be widened when you say reconstruction?
Yeah, so it could be widening. We'd widen it to meet the city's standards. That one's a challenge also. There's the house right on the corner.
Right.
Kind of creates a blind spot. It's narrow as you get towards the bridge. And once you get on the other side of it, it also has some narrow spots and the big culvert for luggage. So it's got multiple challenges.
Yeah, can I add this one? Yeah, okay, nice.
Anyone else with questions or comments? Any remarks from the public on six-year street plan? Dustin, thank you. We'll close the public hearing.
Wait a second. Go ahead, Theon.
Hi, this is Theon Leener, 409 East Main Street. I just had a question. Could you reiterate about how far you were going to go on King Street? Was it all the way down to the pool or do you stop right at Brooklyn?
No, King Street is actually just from Collins Street and around the corner over to Roosevelt. So it's the road right in front of the middle school entrance and around the corner, also in front of the school administration building.
Okay. So just that small roundabout. Okay, nevermind then. I was thinking a different King, North King Street I had. Okay. Sorry.
That's okay.
I definitely don't know what you're doing. I agree 100% and I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments too. Anyone else or any statement on the six-year street plan? See anybody else coming online? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Now, this will be discussed under the resolution on the six-year energy letter agreement that's in the packet as well. And that will be taken up, six-year street plan under resolution will be taken up later in the meeting and the council will act on that at that time. But this information will help anybody who wants to think about that decision that will come. Thank you. Next item we have is the agenda and we need a motion to, for approval of the agenda and the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
On the agenda. Just looking at the approval, since it includes payroll, the $140,000 to Washington State, what is that?
It's to the Washington State Department of Health. It's for loan payments for water projects that we've done in the past. It's, I think it's six months.
Every six months?
Every six months.
I think so.
I think it's every six months.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions or comments before we entertain a motion? If not, do we have a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda?
No motion.
We have a second.
Don't move.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda and the consent agenda for the Goldendale City Council meeting for September 7, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll go on now to department reports and we'll start with our Goldendale Police Department and Sergeant Smith.
Thank you mayor. Nothing, two majors happened. We had an incident with a barricaded subject on the 5th. We had a joint cooperation with the county and WSP. We were assisting. They deployed their canine dog, which bit the suspect and had to bite his ear. He was apprehended at that time. He went down to OHSU for some medical treatment. He was released from OHSU, ended up coming back to Goldendale. Later that night, violated a court order again, was re-apprehended again, and now is incarcerated. We've been working real well with our community. We've had members of the community solve the theft. We had a theft of a generator from downtown. A good citizen was able to contact Darlene, one of the council members here, which called us and we were able to locate the suspect, get a confession and get the property returned. So we appreciate the community's support and the activeness of being alert.
That's exactly the right way.
Other than that, things are going really good, so.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Anything else?
Just negotiations are coming up. Just to throw that out there and remind everybody that our contract's up this next year and they were going to start those next week.
Yeah, they normally start early.
So other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you, thank you. We're hearing now from our Goldendale Fire Chief, Andy. Andy.
Noah. Andy. That's the other break. So our new command pickup came in. So we ordered that in January, very early on in January finally came in. We are ordering stuff to put it together. It'll be a command vehicle for us. So we're having a little bit of difficulties. There's a lot of shortages everywhere, so some stuff are a little difficult to get, but we'll get it. And it's the last council meeting, Steven brought up needing volunteers. We're down to, I believe we're at 20, right around 20 for volunteers. And we need to be up in the probably 30 to 35 range would be ideal, maybe a little more, but that's a good starting number, I guess. So if you guys know anybody that wants to volunteer, let them know.
Is this something we should put out an announcement for?
We are, we are working on that. Phil's actually pretty good on the Facebook deal. It's just something I bring up here just in case, just in case, I guess.
Somebody knows somebody.
Yeah.
Good, that works fine.
That's all.
Thank you, Noah, very much. Larry, do you know where Doug Phantom is on the line tonight?
Yes, he is.
He is, you go.
Okay, Doug, did you have something for public works?
No, I don't have a bunch tonight. Hope it's a tiny lot. And the street lights, I believe that you got those in the way of sticks, I hope.
Yes, they did, thank you.
And other than that, we've just been doing asphalt.
I'd like to iterate and thank the crew for all the hard work they've put in to fix that lathe machine and try it out on a couple of places in Goldendale for laying down a two-inch lift on asphalt.
That's fantastic.
Very nice one over on the intersection of Washington and Second Street. And then I hesitate to say the other one because I told the mayor the wrong street. I think it's Allen. I'm thinking, well, you said it, so good.
If you see the mayor wandering around town, you'll know.
So anyway, they did an excellent job. They spent quite a bit of time trying to get that machine to run and run well. And it's turning out to be a very, very good machine. It takes a lot of babying, but for the small projects that we use it for, it works great.
Great. That'll be a real step forward. I understand we have an asphalt plant.
You have something else?
Yes, Doug.
I'll pass that along to the crew, but it didn't turn out too bad for our first go, that's for sure.
It was nice.
Anyway, we'll do more if we can, given the circumstances that were dealt us.
Right.
There's an asphalt plant in town doing Highway 97 work. So we were able to work with them to get the asphalt coming in in a fashion that allowed us to just keep the hot mix rolling. And so the proximity was set up at Riley's Pit, so the proximity was good for us.
Absolutely.
If we don't have that, then we're traveling all the way to the DOWs to take advantage of asphalt, hot asphalt from the DOWs. But that creates logistical problems because you can't, you have to use all four trucks and so you have to have four drivers and try to keep that hot asphalt going as best you can.
Yep.
It's a lot more difficult to negotiate logistics on going to the DOWs versus going on the east side of 97 here in town.
That sounds like you're making very good use of an opportunity to.
When they are, when they are back running, then we might try to do it again.
Sure, good. And thank you, Doug.
So while you're on department reports, why don't we go ahead and ask Dustin to give us an update on a couple of things he's been working on?
Certainly, certainly.
A couple of things we've been working on is the, or the first one would be the new sewer line across Simcoe Drive. We've been struggling to get bids from contractors on that because they're busy, but we finally did receive a bid from Summit Excavation, a little over $48,000. They extended the timeframe to November 12th, but after looking, I think that's a good bid. It's slightly below the engineer's estimate and I talked with Randy Weirick of Stillwater Ministries. It still meets their deadline. So that should be coming before city council at your next meeting for approval and award of that contract to Summit Excavation. We talked briefly about Byers Street and how we intend to put that off the bid in December, January of this year. And there was one more item.
I think, was it the Highway 97?
Oh yeah, the Highway 97. We're still, I noticed they have it all striped out there where they're going to grind and overlay, but we haven't seen the final contract come through since that contract was awarded to the contractor. So I'm following up with WS DOT to see where that's at. But obviously, we must be on their contract because they've been out there and painted it, so.
Sure. They marked it, we've got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, you very much.
While we're here, because we're talking awards, we did, we have gone out to bid for the civil work at the airport.
Okay.
For the extension of the communications and the electricity down to the west at the end of the taxiways there. And then we're also going to put in a concrete pad and get it ready for the fuel system, fuel tank. And that's being bid. I think it's coming into bid sometime later this week and we hope to have that ready for award as well at the next council.
Very good.
If the bids come in reasonably.
Yeah. That will be the fuel project.
So, oh, I'm sorry. So once that goes off a bid and the tank is ready or that?
I haven't heard that the tank is ready. I know that it's still under contract and they're still working on it. I haven't heard that they finished it yet.
Okay.
I'm thinking we still have some more time before that gets here.
Yeah, okay.
But it is on order and we're anxiously awaiting its delivery.
That'd be great, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll go to council business and the Puget Sound Energy Letter Agreement. And Larry's going to present the details and Gerald Plute, general manager of the plan is here as well.
Okay. So we've been working on this letter agreement for over a year now. And we've been kind of going back and forth and back and forth and we've tried to deal with NPDS permits and we're trying to deal with them being coinciding with what the city requirements are and the NPDS requirements outlined with the Department of Ecology and Puget Sound Energy. We're trying to line all that stuff up and get it consistent and then also to address the issue of rates at the same point in time. So we have come up with this letter agreement and like I said, we've had several people working on it. We've worked with Department of Ecology, Puget Sound Energy, Wastewater Treatment Plant Supervisor, myself, and the Public Works Committee. We've taken, taken apart all of the issues and tried to resolve them in one succinct little package, which is the form of a letter agreement. So the first, there's six items that we're addressing. The first bullet point is regarding the instantaneous increase at any one time would be increased from 600 gallons per minute to 700 gallons per minute. That's the water coming into the plant. So the demand charge, the demand goes up, but it does not affect the annual acre feet amount. So the annual acre feet amount is still the same. It's just that from time to time, they need to fill up their tanks at a much quicker pace than 600 gallons a minute. So they need to go up to 750 on a peak demand request. The second bullet point is similar to that, but it just regards the industrial pretreated sewer effluent. And there are times when they need to have that effluent come out at a faster rate. And so we raised that from 90 to 200 gallons per minute. And that seems like a lot, but what they're going on is the NPDS permit said in its notes that they could go up to 200, but it had limited to four hours. And DOE said, we don't want to have that limitation on there. We just wanted to say 200, 200 GPM. But in practice, it's probably going to be about four hours at a time as opposed to all the time. But again, it's not going to raise the annual acre feet limitation. And then the third bullet is relates to the water usage rate. The city's water usage rate at the time that this, at the time that the original agreement was signed with PSE was 70 cents per 100 cubic feet. That was the overage rate. And at the time, because the industrial, PSE had come in and they had done a lot of infrastructure improvements, that we felt it was appropriate, that was back in 2004, at that time we felt it was appropriate to, to give them a break on their rates. So we made an industrial rate of .38, which is about 54% of the, of the residential rate So we said, okay, since the rate has gone up, the usage rate has gone up since that time, is now .95. So 54% of .95 is now 52 cents per 100 cubic feet. So this bullet point addresses just that issue of the rate change for water usage and your process water rate. And then the fourth bullet point is the same again, except that it's on the sewer side. And then as one of our public, as one of our Public Works Crew Committee members said, they want on the fifth bullet point, they wanted to make sure that the length of time remained at 30 years. So we're about two-thirds of the way through that 20 years. And then finally, the letter agreement also indicates that the pH range should be limited to six, from six to 10 standard units. And that's just a NPDS, Department of Ecology request.
So why, where's your 30 years?
We've been at it for about 20 years, 20 of the 30 years. So you're right. Okay. So that is, in summary, that's what we've been doing over the past year or so. And that's captured in the letter to the Puget Sound Energy folks. And I've talked with Gerald today and they've submitted it to their legal team and his boss. And we've submitted it to our legal, legal attorneys as well. And so everybody's had a chance to look at it and we would like to, to recommend that this be approved at this time and allow the mayor to execute this letter.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Gerald, did you have anything you wanted to add to the discussion or a question or anything?
No, I don't. I mean, Larry explained it very well.
Great.
I guess you have two questions.
Thank you. Do we have questions or comments from the council? If not, we need a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a letter of agreement.
Oh, so moved. I will second.
Thank you, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to execute a letter agreement dated September 7, 2021 with Puget Sound Energy. Any further questions or discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't think so. Good. The next item on the agenda is resolutions on the six-year street plan. And Dustin will be available for any further questions and discussions. He gave a good presentation, so we'll call on the council to add any comments or questions they wish to make.
I have a question, mayor.
Sure.
And maybe, I guess I could have brought it up earlier, but with the roads around the schools being redone, are those being designed in a way that they will hold the heavy traffic, the buses, and that it'll last longer?
Yeah, good question. There's lots of the streets in town actually don't have hardly any base under them. That's what's caused them to fail. So we have, in Goldendale area, we've got high clay content in our soil, which is highly susceptible to moisture. And so they'll be designed with at least probably around 16 inches of road base underneath them. What that does is it moves the prostep down and so you don't, your road lasts longer because it's not, the moisture and the clay content doesn't affect it so much. And so pretty much any street we design anymore is designed that way. And when you increase your base that much, it also increases the load capacity of the road, so.
So these roads, I'm sorry, they will be pretty much redone from scratch?
Yes, the ones in the plan that are reconstruction are. I think the only two that we have under pavement preservation are the chip seal on Simcoe and the chip seal on Roosevelt. And keep in mind too, this is just this year's six-year street plan. Maybe, you know, next year, if there's a road that fails and it needs to be added to the list, it can be added too. Every year you guys get to amend this and, and can change your priority also.
So on Rose and Simcoe, right around the high school, what are the, with the chip seal, what are we looking at for the road to last? Is it going to last or is it going to end up like the one right in front of the middle school that's in Schuster that's severe damage?
So usually a chip seal, you're trying to add five to seven years of life to your asphalt. And what it does is, what causes asphalt to fail most of the time is moisture penetrating that asphalt. And so you get... And so you get superficial cracks, you get water in them, they freeze in the winter, they expand those cracks, water makes it through to your subbase.
And so are those stretches of road, do they have that base that's holding it?
Yes, they do. Yes. Yep. Yep, absolutely. So those were picked for that reason.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Well, Dustin, it sounds like things are looking better for cost. We finally got a reasonable bid there, huh?
Yes, finally.
It looks like the forecast is looking a little more optimistic for not having to reject bids because they're so high, you reckon?
Yeah, every job is different, but hopefully the bidding atmosphere is getting better.
Yeah.
But we have seen some supply costs and material costs start to come down. So that's always a good sign as well.
All right.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we need a motion to adopt the resolution. Mayor, I so move adopt a resolution.
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you, Ellie. It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number 720, adopting a six-year transportation improvement program for city streets pursuant to RCW 36.77.010. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is ordinances, and the first is the McCready rezone, Assembly of God rezone. And Larry Billingham will present that. Is that right?
Yes, it is correct.
Okay.
This one is a little bit complicated as well, but I think we've narrowed it down to the succinct issues at play here. What I'd like to do is I'd like to address both of them at the same time because they are so intertwined with each other that I think it might be easier to understand. So if you go to the McCready rezone, and you look at a... Okay, so if you look at where you have all the nice colored papers, it's about five pages in. And it should be Dan McCready rezone, and it's got a map with some red and blue highlights on it. You see that? So we are trying to accomplish a couple of things with this. And it came about because Mr. McCready had filed with me the boundary line adjustment. And I had to say, no, we can't do that unless we do this. And so this was a SEPA application and a rezone application. The SEPA application happened a couple of months, two or three months ago, and now the rezone had to be submitted. And it had to go to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission met and made a recommendation on that as well. And now we're back to the City Council for final approval and the map change. So back to the map, you'll see that there are a couple of things. One is, in the red slash, you go from C2, which is general commercial, to SR zones in the red slash. And then because the zoning lines are not on the property lines, and that's one of the main things we're trying to fix, we're trying to make sure, because it's very difficult to have land use applications on a piece of property that has two different zones on it. This will happen from time to time because of the way things are sold. But in this case, we want to make sure that the property lines and the zoning lines are the same. So then the blue piece is where we're going to rezone from Mobile Home, which is Mobile Home Park, which is next to the Golden Ridge Mobile Home Park. So we're taking it out of MH Park and converting it to SR zone. So if you look at the very next, the very next one, which we'll get to in a minute, is the rezone of both Dan McCready's blocks. You'll see that there in the red and the blue. And then you'll see, I'll touch on this, I'll go back and touch on this in a minute. But then you'll see the MH to C2 zone and the MH zone, MH to SR zone. That's the Assembly of God piece. And I put that in there just to show how they work with each other. Then the next map is kind of what shows when it all happens. And it includes the piece that Rhodes has did in the same general area. So you'll see how it all ends up, and it's all on property lines. And this is where the Planning Commission spent quite a bit of time trying to, you know, deal with what McCready was asking for. And at the same time, we needed to make sure that the zoning lines matched up with the So the other thing that's important about this is that this also gives an opportunity to work with the Rhodes, Rhodes's people, to utilize the road that they're going to build when they do their subdivision. Because that road that was going to be built was right on that R2 zoning that was in the purple. And so it opens up an opportunity for McCready then to work with Rhodes to utilize an existing road. But again, as we've been talking about tonight, it kind of relates to getting contractors to be able to do the work at a reasonable price. Okay, so if you go to the next separation point, which is in purple, you'll see it says Assembly of God rezoning. If you go about five pages in on that as well, you'll see that there's some blue hatch marks and some green hatch marks. The green takes the zoning from MH to C2 and MH to SR. And you can see where now the zoning lines match up with the property lines. So that's the main thing that the Assembly of God Church is trying to do with theirs. They're just making sure that they eliminate the MH zone and they run the zoning lines along the property line boundaries. So again, I must say, the Planning Commission spent quite a bit of time on this. And they, I actually asked the Planning Commission after I had all, after we had all these maps made, to kind of weigh in, okay, is this what we talked about? And I talked with Mr. McCready as well, and he confirmed that this is what was approved by the Planning Commission. So with all that, take any questions, but I would recommend that council approve the ordinance for the McCready rezone and that they also use ordinance for the Assembly of God rezone.
Any questions or comments?
So this is guy up there by the Assembly of God Church?
Yes. And whether Rhodes is doing it or not.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like this will fix the problem.
I think it will, yep. I think it will. The economic development, possibility as well, for increased housing laws.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Larry, you're going to have to give some direction on this.
Okay.
The wording for the motion is identical for both. Do we do it once or twice? And Connie, I need the resolution number.
I went and got them.
I thought you had.
1509 and 1510.
159? What was the second, 15?
1510.
10, okay. Nine and 10.
Can I have a added?
Yep.
I want to make a motion to approve both resolution 1509 and 1510 as recommended by the Planning Commission.
I'll second that motion.
Good.
Couple of things. One is, it is an ordinance.
Yep.
I think you said resolution.
Oh, sorry. Ordinance 1509 and 1510.
And the request was to waive the second reading, too. That's all right with you guys. I'm okay with that as well. Thank you.
And we have a motion. We have a second.
I second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay, sorry, Phil. You guys move so fast. It's been moved, segmented to adopt ordinance, this number 1509 and 1510, which rezones the McCready property from Mobile Home Park, MHP, and general commercial, C2, to suburban residential, SR, waiving the second reading. Any further questions or discussions? If not, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The motion's unanimous. Thank you. I hate the term using the warp speed, but I think that's what we achieved that time. We'll go now to public comments. No, I'm sorry. Report of officers and city administrator and the mayor.
I've done enough.
You're tired.
Yes, you have.
Can we begin with Phil?
Great, Mayor. Well, we were moving so fast, I'll slow down for a bit.
See?
And not let Larry rest too much. So I have a couple of questions. The first one was on the road towards Court Street, in front of the court. I was, if I remember correctly, last, when it was presented, they were going to indent the current courthouse lawn and make that road wider. That was the original plan, I believe. And now that road has been very narrow, so it's starting to take shape.
The trees became an issue along that, maybe the south side of the road, right? That's what you're talking about?
Yeah.
And there was a, they were taking, there was a plan to do exactly what you had said, but the plan got derailed by some requests from some individuals in our community that wanted to keep those trees. And so they made it narrower, and we left, left roadway as the width that it really was before. So the width that you see right now is about the same as what it was before.
So however, that's going to make, with vehicles parked there, that's going to make that not the width that it is before. So the county did not have money to move the trees?
No, I don't think that was necessarily...
And so we're changing, because I know, again, the fire department, which was a big topic then, large vehicles are coming through there, and so we're going to trees versus public safety?
Well, I've talked with Noah a little bit about it already. And there's things that are still in play. For instance, we talked about with Gordy Kelsey about making the bulb at the intersection of Grant and Court smaller, and then eliminate the parallel parking on the south side of the road, which makes that much wider then, because you don't have parking impacting the traveling fire trucks. You understand what I'm saying?
So there won't be any parking on this south side of the road, is that?
Well, that's one of the things we've been discussing.
Where's everybody to park then? Because that's a huge problem.
Well, there's going to be, where the juvenile department is, where economic development department is, those are going away. And those, that will all become parking spaces. Then the other, other place where they're going to, they've done some temporary work on Grant Street between Court and Allen. And all of that will be, I don't know if you remember, but Gordy Kelsey came in and made a presentation that they wanted to vacate that street. So that street will vacate and then redo the parking over there as well. So that'll be added parking.
Like, right now, how it is, that segment behind the courthouse is very narrow?
Yes.
I mean, just driving my car with another car coming in?
That's just temporary.
Okay, because, and if that's the same way that this road is going to look?
No, no.
Okay.
And then the other place where they're going to add parking is they bought the Columbia River Bank parking lot. And they also did some temporary stuff to get parking for as many people as they can for the workers and so forth. They still go over in the main street. Well, but a lot of the parking situation is still temporary.
I think, well, I think I will share the concern about the parking there, because right now, even though they've moved some vehicles, all of the park, or most of the parking, with the exception of like five spots behind the courthouse, are taken up by courthouse or county vehicles, which is not public parking. And the parking by the bank is also prior to the compression happening, and all of those vehicles were, all county vehicles parked there during the day, overnight.
Yeah, what we're going to...
So they're creating parking for themselves, and then again, no public parking.
The other place where they're going to have public parking is when they tear down the old Leukett County PBD building there next to the public workshop. And so that building will go away as well.
Right.
Where the planning and building departments are. And then what we'll, what we'll see happen is, what I encouraged the Public Works Department to do was to move all of their vehicles, like their buses, things like that, the motor pool, equipment pool, cars, would all be going over to that location, because that's more out of the way, and get people who are wanting to use the Leukett County courthouse to be able to park a lot closer rather than...
My suggestion would be move their motor pool to the fairgrounds, if they're just going to leave the vehicles parked there until somebody checks it out, other than taking out parking spots that, because what's going to happen is, because of proximity, we're already talking about issues with parking on Main Street. So you're going to have people going to the court, to the new courthouse facility, parking and turn on the businesses on Main Street, walking around, because half a block is better than a whole block. You know, so...
Well, this was a major topic of discussion when we went through this whole...
Right.
...issue of the site plan. We, we had, we counted up about 170 parking spaces, and we came up to almost 300 with the new plan.
How many spaces are there, though? Because from what I understand, the county, with that parking, it's going to be mostly for the county workers. It's not public, is what I was told.
Well, you're right. They will have a new building.
Right. And, and without moving the trees for parking, that's going to cut out a lot of parking spots from the front of the building.
Well, it'll just cut out the parallel parking, if we do it that way.
Which is like 10 parking spots, 5 parking spots?
I was thinking closer to seven, but...
Well, that was one question, because it definitely changed from what, what it was before. And I mean, it, it seems like it all benefits the county, but it doesn't benefit the public. So I think we just need to keep an eye on it and make sure that as they redesign...
Well, I think there can be some, some maximization of parking with some creative parking spaces and parking lines. And I think, again, we added over 100 parking spots. But like you say, that, you know, like the Columbia River Bank one, that was, in part, was already being used by some of the county workers.
Or not, just by their vehicles.
Okay, we'll watch it.
Hey, to get a little history to this, because it's... Hey, to give a little history to this, because before you were on the council, when Carl Innett was director of public works, he mapped all that out with the county to make sure they would have adequate space for everybody, public as well as the county workers, and it's, it took into account all the buildings that are to be removed, and then it's, when you see, and I'll try to get those papers for you, because it laid it out, made it a lot easier to figure out where all those cars are gonna go.
Right, well...
He did a good job with it.
The biggest concern is, like I said, it's already hard enough driving to the back of the courthouse in a passenger vehicle, that I don't have enough fire station back there with...
No, it's...
I mean, wow, I just hope we have really, really good insurance, because it's not, if, it's gonna be a matter of time. So, and that can be at the note for the meeting. Okay, second question is, so more of a request along the same lines, is something that I've been following, and so I would like to ask if we can invite our representative for the EMS agency?
Oh, to the...
Is he still on, or is that...
I think he was retiring.
And if not, we should find a new one, because I think he was, he had let us know that he was gonna be departing, stepping down. And, or actually more of the EMS director and a representative from KVH. I know in the news and along other sites of communication, there is a huge problem with EMS or medical service being provided, both here and the entire orch area and the surrounding states with the hospitals filling up. I know that if you turn on the scanner, you'll, you'll hear KVH transporting all the way to Seattle, looking for an ambulance transport, you know, to further away hospitals. And I think on their hospital, hospital Facebook, they were commenting about a patient that they were unable to find transport for ICU bed for...
They couldn't find a bed.
Couldn't find a bed for a whole day or close to a day, and they had to keep that patient in the ER to receive semi-adequate care, which I think it puts Goldendale in a really tight spot, so I'd like to hear from them, and also hear what we can do as a city or, or a council, if anything, to support their needs to improve that EMS service. Every time they request for a patient transfer, it takes that ambulance away from the county, which we only have three. And if they're going to Portland, that's two hours each way, if they're going to Seattle, that's a whole shift, that's a whole day that we're missing an hour.
They've always done transport, though.
Right, but it's usually to a nearby hospital.
Well, when I was on ambulance, I went to Spokane, Seattle, so it just depends, I guess.
Yeah. But the, the more, the more the situation does not improve, we're, we're gonna find ourselves in a tight spot, and at least, at least I'd like to be informed as to what's happening with them, and if anything we can do to help them, or what we're gonna be facing.
I think we're gonna find a tight spot here with this vaccine.
Very much so.
Well, that's a whole different, that's a whole different animal there, because we might be losing some employees and, so...
But we'll contact EMS to see if we can get a representative for the next council meeting.
Yeah, we can hear from them and KVH, and, you know, I know they had a, a hard time with their bond proposal, but this is gonna be a different situation, that's not gonna resolve anytime soon, so...
Unfortunately. Anything else?
That's it. I think that's plenty.
Milo?
Well, thank you, Mayor, yeah. Well, just a quick comment, a week or so ago, I was up at the governor's office, and I don't meet in the governor's office, but we meet outside with the staff, and give them an update on what the city of Goldenale is working on, and also update on the pump storage project, which is a very big project that could benefit the city of Goldenale and the junior tax districts here, so... And a notice comment, need more volunteers, I've been pushing that for a number of years, and again, I'll go talk to the volunteer firefighter association and find out what, what they may be coming up with, this coming legislature. The idea is what we need to do is try to come up with a incentive, so the fire departments can recruit and also retain the volunteer firemen, so... I know I'm still on the board of volunteer firemen and reserve officers, and we're trying to improve the retirement system, but I know everybody needs to kind of work on that, because that's a problem statewide or whatever, yeah, so, anyway, that's, that's what happened there, so...
Thank you. Dave?
Let me go last, please, Mayor, I actually gathered my thing here.
Okay.
So I was just kind of throwing it around, but I think our dog catcher and our compliance person, if we combine that and just hired one person that could do it, because I know, don't we have the dog catcher, just does like eight hours a week or something, then the compliance person, I don't think's full-time, if we could combine that, we might be able to kind of fix some stuff up around here. Just a thought.
I think that's a good thought for the budget committee.
Yeah.
That's my thought.
This should be discussed, are you in the budget committee?
What committee is she on, so we can have some...
I think you're on the planning, right? So this is a planning thing.
Maybe you're on the public works.
Yeah.
But yeah, we need to talk about how we could work it out.
Yeah, I think that to combine those and get somebody that just, you know, full-time would be kind of something.
Okay. Elliot, is Ellie still on the line?
Yeah.
Elliot, do you have anything for council?
Um, yeah, I've heard, I've heard everybody talk about how, how stressed the, our EMS services are, and I think thanks to the, the governor and his recent vaccine mandate, it's probably gonna get even more stressed. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Well, yeah, I just wanted to say, one thing I appreciate is starting these meetings off with a pledge of allegiance. I'm glad I remembered all the words, it's been a while since I've said it regularly. You know, I was thinking about some of the words in that pledge and how it ends, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." When you think about those words, those words were guided by providence. During the last council meeting, the mayor read a card from the church out in Centerville. They just wanted to let us know that they're praying for us. That was, you know, special to me to hear that, you know, it's the kind of best gift we can give each other, especially in times like these. You know, George Washington would regularly call upon Americans to pray for their country. So I'd like to yield the rest of my time to Pastor Kevin Gershak to say a prayer with us now.
Well, first of all, I don't want to grandstand, but I do want to thank you for taking care of our issue with our zoning, and I speak on behalf of Dan and the McCready's as well for that, but I would, if it would be all right with you, I'd love to honor you by praying for you, and I want you to know, I'm not just doing this tonight, our church and a lot of the churches in this community pray for you guys regularly, we know you've got a lot on your plate. Heavenly Father, I just want to take this moment and thank you for our mayor, our city council, our police, our healthcare workers, our firefighters, and God is there on the front lines of a lot of these struggles right now, and having to make tough decisions in a very challenging time. I ask God that you would bless them with wisdom even beyond their own abilities, God that they would see things that they weren't even supposed to see, and they would make decisions that would protect this community, protect its residents, protect its businesses. And God, we ask you to bless this community, we pray that you would just, in, in all things, help us to be a community that, that cares for one another, that treats each other with respect, and that builds one another up. And again, I thank you for each of these, I thank you for their time that they invest, the energy they put into the jobs, and Lord, I pray you would just bless them for that. And now I just pray your direction as they move forward in their decision-making process, and to all of those things, we just want to give you praise, in the name of Jesus.
Amen.
Thank you.
The only other one is the mayor's remarks, and I think the pastors' words are very appropriate for all of us, there's a lot of cooperation going on in this county right now, the city, the county, the state to some extent, federal government as well, working to be able to, to evaluate, present, and discuss all of those projects for Goldenale and Clidet County that have been in our sets list and our county projects list, all those have been there for years, you've talked about it many, many times, as to do with the wastewater treatment plant, with a number of different things like that, that are costly, difficult to get support for. And this whole effort is a consolidated effort, working very, very hard to be able to attract donors, to get some cash to help, get these donations to help get these projects started or, or steps of it done. And it takes a tremendous amount of cooperation, which we're getting very, very nicely, and we appreciate it very much, it's just an astounding effort. We won't know till probably late September, you'll be getting more details over the next weeks and months, as far as how that all came out and where it's going to start with, and we'll try to get as much information as possible out, but this is a very positive step for economic development for Goldenale, also for the Columbia-Gorse Community College. Our KVH has quite a big project there, things that we can't do all by ourselves, every one of them is like that, and so we're trying to get outside help from state, federal, and other foundations that might help us to be able to fund projects that are needed, they've been on the books a long, long time, and if we don't get this help, they'll probably be there when we die, they're big, difficult projects. So with that, I really commend the, they're called REDS, R-E-D-S, it's not a drug, first time I heard it, I thought, oh, this is not a good discussion, but it stands for Regional Economic Development Summit, that's what happens on the 22nd of September, and that'll be a big, a big event, it'll be publicized and open, and I think we'll be able to, again, to make some real progress there. With that, let's go to public comments, is there anyone here for public comment?
Kevin has his hand up.
Okay.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, first off, I want to apologize, I did miss the last meeting, Grandma got COVID, and we had a, a separate death in the family, I apologize for missing the last meeting. Second, Mayor, is there any way that you or Larry could talk with the hospital and possibly get one of the doctors to come out and maybe give a five, 10-minute lecture on the next meeting, for information purposes on COVID? There's a lot of disinformation out there, which I heard a little bit today, me being a scientist, it scares me, but I just thought that would might be a good idea, we could get somebody that's actually educated on the topic to address the city council and the city in whole. I digress, you have a good day, sir.
Thanks, Kevin, we'll do our best to get that organized. Anyone else for public comment?
Dionne has her hand up.
Who?
Dionne. Unless, unless it's still up from the last time.
Please go ahead.
Dionne, did you have something to say?
Yeah, no, I, I just, in regards to Ellie and Kevin, I am concerned about what's happening to our staff and every, you know, there, we may lose quite a few people come October with this mandate, so yeah, I think we should all be concerned on who's caring for us and how, and I think it's important that we all do, thank you for the prayer. And I know the prayer is vital and key to all of this, because all we want is the best for each other, so I think it, I think we should take that into account, for sure, 100%. Thank you guys. That's all I have to say.
Appreciate it very much, I think we all need to take that step ourselves, individually and as, as congregations. Anyone else for public comment? Yes?
Oh, I guess a couple things, now I just started out... I kind of come up to... I just start out with one thing, I've been trying to download the water and sewer billing, and I get an error that PDF document you request is not currently available, however, online payments can be made, PDF should be available soon. Are you aware of that, and do you know what the status of it is when they'll be ready?
That's the first time I've heard of anything like that.
Okay. Second of all, for Kevin...
We'll check into that.
Okay, all right. And then we've done, the hospital has done some on their Facebook page, I don't know what it is, because I'm not a Facebook fan, nor do I waste my time on it, but he has put out some very good videos called Doc Talk through various weeks, and he's explained a lot of things about COVID, maybe that would give Kevin the education or the information that he's asking for, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Kevin, is your hand up again, or is it just still up?
No, I'm an idiot, I did love her, it's my fault.
Okay.
But I would still like to see a doctor show up in the city council, listen to everything that an actual doctor has to say, Facebook is Facebook, I don't rely on it, it is.
No, we'll work on it, I think we can get it done. If there aren't other public comments, we need a motion to adjourned city council?
I'll motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
It's moved and segmented to adjourned city council for September 7th, 2021, our next meeting will be on September 20th, 2021. With that, good evening, and thank you all for the work, and thank this council for their great work to get this all carried out, thank you.